Good evening and welcome to the March 2023 Meeting of the Penfield Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. This is a public meeting and is being broadcasted on Penfield Public Broadcast and is also available on YouTube after the meeting. Our first item of this evening is the approval of last month's minutes and the finance report. Oops, sorry. Do I have an adoption, a motion for the approve the agenda of the meeting?
I'm motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you so much.
Brett, before we approve the agenda, can we add one item?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we add, under item nine unfinished business, can we add B, the Ruth Brehman Room?
Perfect. We'll add the gift for Barbara tonight as well.
Right.
Okay. Perfect. So those two further adjustments there, Jennifer, do you still make the motion to approve?
Yep.
Do I have a second? Niraj, seconds, all in favor? Perfect. Now we're moving on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Justin? Sorry, thank you, Anna. All in favor? Thank you. Niraj, would you like to go over the finance report?
Sure. Thank you, Brett. So if we can go to the monthly budget summary, guys. This shows data through February 2023. So that's two months out of the year. That's 16 and 2/3 percent. So if we roll down to see how our expenses are coming, our total expenses are coming in about 16 percent. So we're right in line with budget. Our controllable expenses, which I like to focus on, wages, that's coming in better by 1 percent, so essentially flat. That's to be expected. Materials is better by 10 percent, so we have room there to spend. And then contractuals are better by 12 percent. If we move on to the operating budget, our operating budget looks good considering the revenues from the fines, copies, and interest and the expenses. The gifted memorial fund, that's largely unchanged from prior month. It's about $142,000. And that's pretty much it for this month's finance reports. Can we have a motion to approve it?
Megan, motions to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Jennifer, all in favor? Well, public participation, I believe Judy's out right now, but Megan or Harish, is there any public participation? Communications?
No, I don't believe there were any updates on that.
Perfect. We have our town liaison, Linda. How are you tonight?
I'm good. It hasn't been that long since our last meeting because it came late. So there hasn't been a lot to report on. You know, I told you last time we were creating a Parks and Rec board. Well, we filled it. And at the last meeting, we created a Clark Barn Advisory Committee to study what can be done with the barn. And that hasn't been filled yet. That's going to be, staff has put together a list of the needs of the kind of people you want, you know, from where they're located around town and everything like that. So that'll be coming up soon. Otherwise, you know, the big thing, I suppose, for the board is that we're going to be only meeting now, from now on, twice a month. We've been meeting every week for as long as I've been around. But the decision was made to change the rules and procedures. So we'll have a one legislative meeting, one work session. And if we need to have something special, we will meet. So, you know, the next, well, I'll bring that up. You know, appoint somebody to the library board. That would be at the April 3 meeting because there won't be another meeting until May. So it's not as, you know, it'll be different. It'll be different. But the thought was that we have so few items on work session. Some nights we're there a half hour, you know. Sometimes we're there an hour, two hours. But, you know, it depends. It depends. We can spread it out and it'll be a lot easier on the employees and so on like that to move forward. Otherwise, tomorrow night, we have our regularly scheduled meeting. We're having, as you know, we're having our librarian, Anne Bartruda, come to talk about the Ruth Brehman Room remodeling. And there's going to be a report about, from Bonadillo, about draft financial statements for the town. We've been talking about the DPW facility and possibilities of putting that up as a referendum item because it really needs a facelift. So there's a lot of things going on in the works. But I guess the change in the meeting schedules, the big one that's occurred. So if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you so much, Linda.
Sure.
And then we're going to go on to the next bulletin point here, Friends of the Penfield Public Library Liaison Report. I don't know who is taking that over this month.
Ross, do you want to talk?
I will just say that I believe I'm attending this Friday's meeting with Rhonda on Friday morning at 10:30, I think it is.
Right. So they have an annual meeting this Friday. And Harish will come to represent the board. And I will come to represent the library. But people should know that there is going to be a small mini book sale early May, only children's and teen materials in the Ruth Brehman Room. You can check their website if you'd like to volunteer or if you'd like to come to the book sale.
Perfect. And just as a reminder to the public, the Friends of the Penfield Library do a lot with these book sales in terms of providing resources to the community. So we strongly encourage everyone to go and attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Committee reports. Niraj, anything further to report on the finance committee?
No.
Anna, I know we're coming up here with the personnel. I know there's some items that you have pending here.
Yeah.
You take the floor.
Okay. So we met with three candidates to fill the open position on the Board of Trustees, all very well qualified, all great people. We filled the position with Jason Becker. He is very involved in the community, is a volunteer firefighter, has some great ideas about looking at our plan and how we're going to get there. So I think he will be a great addition to our team.
Nice. Looking forward to having him join us.
And I actually did get another application just yesterday, somebody who has been out of town. So I will let them know that it's already full, but we welcome anybody in the fall.
Absolutely. Awesome. Well, thank you so much for overseeing that. It means a lot. And then Rhonda, I think you had some things you wanted to discuss, too?
We have two new staff members. Both are on-call librarians, which means they don't have any permanent hours. We contact them if we need a shift covered. But both are fine librarians. Well, Chris Finger is a longtime librarian. He's local. Courtney Widdie, she's going to be, has been hired as a librarian trainee. She did finish her education. She has her master's in library science. But she also has to have her New York State license. And that sometimes takes a few months. So she'll be starting as a trainee. And once she gets that license in place, we'll promote her to a full on-call librarian. Both have begun training and both are excited to be with us.
Awesome. That's very exciting. Next item up is strategic planning, huh, committee? Jennifer, anything to report this month?
No.
Okay. Justin, we come to the bylaws. I know you've worked a lot this week, this past month.
So bylaws, we've been bringing them up the past two meetings, hoping to move forward with it this meeting. I sent out the big, long email last week after a lovely meeting with Rhonda. Last meeting, we also had our expert come in as a guest at our meeting to talk about all the proposed changes. I assume everyone on board was able to at least go over my brief email to see all the proposed changes. The vast majority of it is just reformatting. A lot of just language changes, making sure that we have consistency throughout. There was the big change in certain sections. Let me just pull that up real quick. The big changes were as far as attendance for board members, removing the section that expressly removes the board member after missing a certain number of meetings and leaving that up to the board to discuss separately. That way, there's no automatic trigger if for whatever reason someone misses two meetings. There's no immediate trigger that they're just off the board. We still have the power to review that board member. And if they're not performing their duties, we can remove them. But it just gives us a little bit more flexibility when it comes to board members and their attendance because we all have very busy lives.
Yeah.
So, and things just happen. The other big change would be changing the role of the president and committee selection. And this one, we actually, we need to discuss and decide which way we want to go. We can leave the language as it is where the president appoints all of the committee chairs and all of the committees. Or we can remove the president from that role. So just to limit the power of the president and make committees be elected just from the trustees. So their nominations would come just from the board without the president. So that would be the main thrust of the discussion. Everything else is pretty straightforward.
So how would that work usually? Like if...
At our last meeting of the year, which we changed the language to say annual meeting. Instead of the president appointing the committees, we, as the trustees that aren't the president, would put forth nominations for each committee chair and members of the committee, and we would all just vote on it.
Oh, so everybody would kind of put in their suggestion who's something is...
Right. So we wanted you to be finance chair. I would say I nominate Niraj to be finance chair for the calendar, next calendar year.
I mean, who wouldn't?
Right. And we would just vote on it instead of the president making the appointment. The parliamentarian that we had come in to review our bylaws said it would just gives the president too much power over the committees and over the board.
I understand.
So do we have any thoughts, discussions?
I think in terms of selecting committees, I'm open to any suggestions. I don't have any personal preferences one way or the other. As we start thinking about the board, not only today, but, you know, more in the future, in handing off these bylaws to future board members, we want to make sure that we're setting them up for success. So start to thinking, you know, start thinking about not only what's best today, but more holistically, what's going to work, you know, for the community more appropriately. So I think...
So my only thing is, I think it works well right now. And I think that having input from other people is great. The other option would be maybe to, like, voice your opinions informally to the president. Like, just so then the president that we've elected has the choice. The reason why I'm saying that is in December, when sometimes it's busy for a lot of people to get, maybe if there was a tie between three people or something like that, how are we going to come around to electing somebody? I don't know. I'm just saying that. And then after all, the president is working with, I mean, we all have a great board. But he's leaning on a lot of the finance or all these committee chairs. So it's also trying to make sure that our board works effectively and just to make sure that the president has a good rapport. That's my only thing. I mean, I understand that having voice and everything. But I think efficiency is also something that we might want to think about.
With the timing or like planning of future votes, is there any way to change the language so those terms come due like in January? Since we're not bogged down by the holiday season trying to, you know, tie up year-end things and then everyone trying to vote on it? Is that a possibility?
Very often, a board will have the nomination process before the end of the year and then the election at the first meeting of the year. Would that make that easier?
I think so.
It would give, it would give the trustees time to kind of mull it over and think, do I want this position? Do I have time for this responsibility? And before they actually jump in and say, sure, I can do this. It's, you know, it's all a lot of work and we really need to balance the responsibilities.
Yeah. And just to give the public more feedback as to how, you know, the current selection process was this past year. It was just me sending out an email to each board member saying, hey, you know, please rank your committees by choice, you know, one through five, ones you most want to participate in. Just kind of, you know, more, add more transparency as to how I did that. As I know that was used by other board presidents as well. Any questions?
I mean, I feel like that has worked well. You know, ultimately, rather than, again, going through the process of, okay, we have to nominate for everything and then have a vote for everything, you know, having the president be the one to determine that. But I know in my almost three years now, I want to say, you know, the consideration has always been done by the president. You know, for instance, do not make me chair of the finance committee. That's all, Niraj. You know, and so I always appreciated that there was the opportunity to share, you know, kind of your top ranking. Or, you know, again, to maybe even just expressly say, this is a committee I'm really not comfortable with, you know, please don't. And then obviously, there is some trust in the president then that, you know, they'll respect our input. But I've always been comfortable with how that, that process went. It was never, it never seemed to me like just an arbitrary, we slapped you on this committee.
No, but it definitely opens it up for abuse in the future.
Just, yeah, just to play devil's advocate, yeah. We all love Brett. And in the past, as we're finding, we've had presidents that have considered everything. But that's not always going to be the case. There, you know, there is the possibility that someone is elected into the presidential role that doesn't consider that.
Yes.
And this just removes them because they already are sitting in a position of power.
Yes.
It more democratizes the power across all the committees, not having them appoint. And obviously, through the nomination and election process, you could always turn down a nomination. If, you know, Anna is nominated for the finance chair, she can go, I'm not comfortable with that. I do not accept the nomination.
Yeah.
And as far as like ties go, we do have an odd number of board members for a reason. So there are no ties, essentially. And we can work out language as far as how the voting goes, first pass the posts or ranked chose voting as far as nominations go. I think removing it from the president's, like, sole purview.
Yes.
Just democratizes it as a whole.
Yeah, I agree with it.
Is that just for the chairperson or is it for the entire committee that you get, that you ask to be nominated on that committee? How does that work?
That is an excellent question. We have not fully fleshed that out. It could be, it is up to us. We could have whoever is appointed, whoever is elected chair and then just ask.
Who wants to be?
Who wants to be on this committee with me?
So I think it's a nice idea, the way that it's been done in the past because, and I don't have a firm stance either way for nominations or not. But I like that it gets changed up some as well. I know that, you know, Niraj has the finance committee for a reason, right? That's his expertise. But some of the other, like, I've switched committees. I've been put on different committees, not by, because I've asked, but because of that. And it's a good, I think that's good to have, to get experience in different parts and different jobs and roles in the board. So that would be something that you might fall into. If somebody asks to be nominated for this committee, they might ask to constantly be on the same thing. And then you won't get that, the variety of experiences. But that's just, I don't, I'm just bringing that to the attention, just to...
No, so that's a nice point, John.
Rhonda, you have been a part of two other libraries. How has it been in those situations?
I will say that I was surprised that the president had the power to do this. When I came here, I had never seen that before. And then when Adrian Strattan mentioned it, I did think that he was right. However, this is your decision. You are the board. That's only my experience and it's somewhat limited. It's my third library, but that's only three out of, a lot of libraries out there. So, you know, whatever works for you, you know, I will support. And we, you know, that's why we gave you option A and B. Because when Justin and I sat down to write the bylaws based on Mr. Strattan's advice, we came to this part and we thought, well, this is really very different. And it needs some further discussion. But on the other hand, it would be really great if we can finalize these bylaws tonight, make this decision tonight, and move forward.
So thinking in terms of that we would have to kind of flesh it out a little bit, like, once somebody was chair and then how the committee was formed. I mean, what if we had almost kind of the happy medium that somebody can ask, you know, to be nominated as the chair? We determine that and then the chairs meet. The trustees can offer their input into what they're interested in. And then based on that, the committee chairs can make the decision of who's going to be on what committee. So that that way, again, the sole power is taken away from the president. You do then still have some of what Jen talked about that, you know, you don't ultimately decide every committee that you sit on. There's still the opportunity for the trustees to offer, you know, feedback into either something they're really interested in or something they're really not interested in. Or even possibly, you know, saying, I've never been on this committee before, so I'd really like to, you know. And then leave it up to the chairs of the committees to determine who's going to, to sit on those.
One idea would be that Brett continues, the president continues to, to speak to the trustees ahead of time to see what they're interested in and bring that to the annual meeting and move from there. That would take out a little bit of that.
Okay. So do we want, do we want to take a vote on what people's thoughts are one way or the other on that topic? Is that okay? Okay.
Yes.
So all those in favor of keeping it in the president's realm of selecting, you know, the committee members? Anyone in favor of that? Perfect. All those in favor of making it more of a voting process? Okay. So I think we have the language of which, or the direction that we want to take with this, with this policy. Did anyone have any other comments or concerns about the other changes that need to occur? They're more just formatting and things like that, if I'm not mistaken, or Justin?
They're mostly formatting, giving Rhonda an ex officiado membership to the board where she can sit on the board. She's non-voting, but she advises us. It's that kind of stuff. She, we wrote all the new bylaws, sent them all to you. But if we're all ready, we can make a motion to approve all of those edits that we've made. And we can flesh out the nomination and voting process to be approved in just another meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the changes.
Jennifer, do I have a second? All those in favor? Perfect.
Thank you. That was a lot of work that you did. Thank you for taking that on.
Me and Rhonda. Rhonda did a lot.
No, no. It was, is actually much shorter than I expected because we were very much of the same mind. And it went very quickly. It was excellent. Quick, Brett, we didn't actually vote to nominate Jason. Can we do that?
Yes. Do I have a motion to nominate Jason Becker?
What was it? Anna, do I have a second?
Jennifer, all those in favor? Perfect. Justin, we are looking forward to having you a part of the team. Communication. Sorry, Megan or Harish, anything to report on this committee?
No, not at this time.
No. Okay. Perfect. Sorry. And then we move on to the director's report. Rhonda?
Great, thank you. I will thank you again for last month's meeting vote that is removing all the late fines for children's NYA materials beginning on April 1st. The staff has been working very hard to get that ready in time. We had a lot of work to do on the coding of items and the education of our staff. And we're working now on wording for when people come in and they question our decisions. So thank you so much. So we've been really working on that. Everybody is very excited about it. I did go to the MCLS Directors Retreat, which was at the Rochester Museum of Science, Museum, RSMC, Rochester Museum Science Center, which was really interesting. It was about racist images in Rochester and how we need to be aware of these images in our own buildings. Very, very eye-opening.
Is there anything that we need to be aware of within our own building?
Not that I have seen. They concentrated on the Take It Down movement. Does anybody know about the Take It Down movement? There was a, there was a carousel panel at Charlotte in 2015. And the museum has created a whole display of that panel and what we've learned since and how we just have to be very aware of what these images do to our, our young people or people of any age, really. We've had several meetings. I did finish the annual state report, which we'll vote on. And maybe you have some questions. We did the bylaws revision. So we, as a staff, decided that we really wanted to start promoting the strategic plan. And the way we did it this month was we sent out an email blast. And it went out to 13,256 people. And basically, it's just this email blast that goes out to anybody who has a library card. And we very carefully wrote this email to include promotion of our monthly e-newsletter, which we're really trying to get people to sign up for. Our very huge, expensive, or maybe just different programs that are coming up that we really want people to know that we're doing new things. New library services, including like the New York Times and some databases. And of course, our strategic plan. So this blast went out in conjunction with social media posts on Facebook and Instagram. And we also put out an article through the town e-newsletter so that everybody during the same, this week, somehow or other, saw this information. And our stats were really very high. Of the 13,000 emails we sent out, over 12,000 were successfully delivered. Over 6,700 were opened and read. Well, hopefully read, but they were opened. And 500 people clicked on particular links that we included. So we're trying to get the word out that we, we have a mission and then we're set to start working towards it. We have a newly formed diversity and inclusion committee in the library staff. And we have had a webinar already and six people attended, which is fantastic. And our spring author series has begun. We did have Linda Su Park come last Saturday. And that program was geared towards students age eight through 12. And so Linda Su Park came, talked about the book, The One Thing You Would Save. Talked about the writing process, the publishing process, how her life has affected her writing. You could have heard a pin drop. There were 80 kids in that room and the parents were lined around. So it was very crowded. There were a lot of younger siblings. It was amazing, just amazing. It was just like, couldn't have been better. And the questions, you know, after about 20 minutes, 25 minutes of talking, she opened it up to questions and the questions took like another 20 minutes. So many kids raised their hand. It was adorable and funny and, and they had some really good questions, some very silly questions, but some wonderful questions about writing and growing up and your experiences. And then one person asked how old she was, and that was funny. And one person asked, do you know James Patterson? Which she does. So that was cute. It was just fantastic. And then we gave a book to every young person who came. And she had autographed every book ahead of time. So they walked out clutching their books, which was very, very cool. And then at the end, she stayed another 20 minutes so that people can meet her. And she shook hands. And some people brought their own books and she signed those books. And she had given them a craft. The book, The One Thing You'd Save, is about what's really important to you, what you would save from your home should you need to run out of the home. So she gave them a craft. We handed out paper and pencils and she asked the children to draw a picture of what they would save. And then we took all of the pictures and we posted them on a wall. So if you look at our Facebook page, we do have it posted there. It's just fantastic. And then she took pictures with the librarians in front of the display. And it was just, just, just amazing, just amazing. But we're getting ready for our next author visit, which is Marie Bennett. ready for our next author visit, which is Marie Benedict and that's on May 18th and registration begins April 1st.
Nice. Such exciting times. Does anyone have any questions? I know we have the unfinished business of the Holly donation. If we don't mind moving that to the May meeting, just because I've been busy at work. Then we'll move on to new business. Rhonda, I know you wanted to go over decreasing barriers to the library board access.
Right. So I had, I, this, you know, has been, it's been very slow to get new bids on the Ruth Berman Room, so I didn't have this as part of the agenda, but I have everything now and I have a handout for you. So the first page is the PowerPoint that will show the town board tomorrow. And then the next two pages are the two bids that we have. As you know, we have $20,000 in our 2023 budget for capital improvements and that has to go towards the kitchenette. That was a grant from Senator, from Assemblyperson Lunsford. So we have to do that. But we really would like it if the town board might agree to some extra funding so that we can put in new flooring. It's very old. Paint the walls. It's been a long time. We have that one room that was a former projection room from the elementary school. If we could just get rid of the raised floor, we can use that to store our tables so that they're out of the way. And when we do have a large program, we don't have tables out there. And then, you know, we can, we can move forward. I'm hoping that this is approved. I'm hoping that the town board agrees to give us this funding. I'm asking you what specifically we should ask of the town board. We have $20,000 and these two updated estimates, of course, since our original estimates, the prices have all gone up. My original meeting with Debbie Drew, I asked, we asked for $20,000 that now we need 22,000 at least. Do you think that we should ask for 22,000, maybe 23 or 24,000 and see if the town board is willing to give it? I just don't want to come up short and not be able to finish the project and we're, it's such a tight budget as it is.
Don't you ask based upon, you know, multiplying by 20% or something to contingency, what it might cost?
We could do that.
I mean, one is, I mean, that's acceptable because you know, prices go up and because if we did something, it's always like not to exceed a certain amount.
Right.
So.
Okay.
That's the kind of buffer.
Seems like 25.5 would cover that amount.
Say 26.
26,000?
26,000.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 26,000.
Okay. So I will bring these materials to the board tomorrow. It starts at 6:30. All of you are welcome to come if you are available and that's it. Yeah. I'm really hoping that we can do this in September because we have summer reading coming up and so much programming already scheduled, but in September, things quiet down and that would be just the perfect time to get this done. And I am telling each of the companies who are giving us these estimates that we're waiting until September. So hopefully their prices won't go up again. I don't know.
Never know with inflation.
Yes.
All right. Rhonda, anything else for the new business that you want, that we need to cover there?
Did you want to talk about the Barbara Power?
Yes. Yeah. So Barbara Powers was our former president. She resigned just beginning of the year from the board. Wanted to do something I know we've done in the past where we created like a gift or maybe had a get together. Any ideas as far as what we should do and also what would be appropriate, knowing that we don't want to use funds that could be perceived inappropriately because the gift memorial fund, our donations and we don't want to be seen as spending them frivolously or things like that. Open to suggestions. I know we've come up with potentially the idea of maybe having a book or a couple of books donated, you know, that she selects in her name. So when those are selected, there would be like a living legacy kind of item. Any other thoughts or ideas?
That goes right to the, that goes right to the patrons.
Correct.
So that's a great idea.
Yeah, it was, that's something we should possibly create like a policy on to sway it's easier for future boards?
More of a tradition, I'd say.
Okay. Wasn't sure. Okay. All right. So shall we just do one book, three books? What would you guys think would be appropriate?
I'd say three books.
Yeah, I like the idea of three books.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll try to make that like a new tradition because I know she did that with other board members. So I'll connect with Barbara and see what books she would like to select.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we move on to the claims and payments. I don't know who.
No, decreasing barriers. We still have all the new business. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Perfect. Yeah, decrease in barriers. Sorry.
Right. So, you know, when I first came into this position, I told the trustees that I needed time, you know, to see how things were, to see how the policies you already had in place worked. And one of the first things I noticed was that it was sometimes hard to get a library card, harder than it needed to be. One of our missions is to increase readership, increase the use of the library. So in the course of the year, I have come up with three ideas of how we can increase access to the library. The first one is the paid reciprocal borrower cards. Okay. So as per our agreement with Monroe County Library System, individuals who don't live in Monroe County can purchase a paid reciprocal borrower card and it costs for any library in the system, any patron in Monroe County, it would cost $25 to receive this card. And you can get one at Penfield, but unfortunately, the policy had always been that the Penfield Library would not accept the $25 in-house for whatever reason. I don't know. But if somebody came in and they did not live in Monroe County and they asked for this card, they could fill out the application, but then they had to send the payment. We had to send the payment to MCLS and the patron had to wait before he or she got a card, an active card that would last. Or they can go online, but we couldn't help them. It was just like a little convoluted. Right now we have 202 people who have this card and we would like to make it easier. I have spoken to the town, Barbara Churto from the town, to ask if this is a possibility that we accept the $25. It would go into an account and sit there until we're billed for it. Won't cost us any money. It will allow the patron to get his or her card immediately and begin using that card immediately. This, I think, is one of our friendly responsive customer service, not telling people they have to wait, not telling people they have to go online or go to another library. That's not a great idea. So I think this is one way that we can decrease barriers for access. What do you think?
That's just a zero cost.
Zero cost.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, 100%.
This is a no-brainer.
I see no reason why we would not do that. And I mean, anything that's going to make access to the library easier. Seems like, like you said, it's a no-brainer.
It seems like such a no-brainer. I'm just trying to understand why it wasn't done in the past.
I don't know.
Is there a liability reason or something?
I really don't know. I can't tell you. I've spoken to other directors who are accepting the payment and they all say there are no issues involved. I've spoken to Monroe County Library System to ask how we would pay this money back and they said, this is nothing. You get an invoice. You pay the invoice. It's nothing.
Okay.
I wonder if maybe it's something that when it was originally put into place, there wasn't the ability for libraries to accept it in-house. And then when that became an option, Penfield just never updated
Very possible.
to reflect accordingly. That's the only reason I can think of why it wouldn't have just always been in place.
Yeah, I just.
So then I, if you all agree, then I would need a vote to say that yes, we will accept payment for a paid reciprocal borrower card at the Penfield Public Library.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Harris, all those in favor?
Thank you, thank you.
Perfect.
The second is restricted library cards. So if you look at the back of your handout, we have 365 Penfield Public Library District students who don't live in Monroe County. They live in Wayne County, but they go to school here in Monroe County. They go to our Penfield schools and some of them are, you know, a quarter of a mile away at the high school and some of them come to the library for their class trip. Some of them come as first graders when everybody else is getting a library card and they cannot get a library card. So to me, this doesn't make sense. To me, we should open access to these young people. There are other libraries who have the same situation where they have a lot of students who don't live in the county and those libraries are the Webster Library, the Hamlin Library and the Mendon Library. I've spoken to those directors to see what they've done and all of them offer this restricted library card. Basically, a young person would come in and apply for a library card with the signature of the parent as any other person and we would track that card until that person graduated from high school. And at that point, the restricted card would become, you know, null, void, but the card would be used while the child is here in the Penfield School District. So this, you know, partnering with our local schools is a key goal of our mission and our strategic plan. I would tell you that the children's librarians feel very uncomfortable when the schools come to visit and they have to say, well, this child is different from the rest of the children and what could we do? And it's, you know, these, these library cards are not good for eBooks. They're only good for the physical books. So it's not really costing us much if they're just checking out the books, still have a signature of the parent on file should the book go missing or now we don't have fines, so that's not an issue. But there's still that financial responsibility is there. To me, this is.
When you say restricted card, Rhonda, is there any difference between that child's card versus another child's card who does live in Monroe County or no?
Yeah, because this child would only be able to use the card at the Penfield Library.
Gotcha.
Not at the Fairport Library or the Webster. It's a restricted card. It's because this person does not actually pay taxes. The family doesn't pay taxes in Monroe County. Therefore, that person can't get an MCLS card, right? But this is something to help that child go through school.
I'm looking at the language here and it says, but have an acceptable reason for using the member library. Could that also fit for teachers who work in Penfield School District that are not residents of Monroe County? Because I imagine we probably have that as well.
I think it would make sense to include them.
So I don't know if we need to, I don't know if that needs to change to
Like students and employees.
if we need to say students and employees or something like that or if not, if it even matters. But I think that would also be helpful.
I think especially, I think, and you know, Rhonda, you put in a note here that one part of the strategic plan was really trying to partner with the local schools and imagining how convenient it would be. I mean, A, for the students, I can't imagine, again, being the librarian who has to tell a child that you can't have a library card like all of your friends get. And then also, Jen, I think you make a great point that if there are teachers who, you know, are coming to Penfield every day because they're teaching, how convenient would it be for them to be able to utilize the library as well? And I think, you know, if we're really trying to strengthen our relationships with the schools, I think that that's a key.
And I don't know if we need to change. I mean, it fits within the language here. The only thing, if you wanted to say students and
Faculty member?
teachers or faculty members, you know, PCSD faculty or whatever. If you wanted to do that, I don't know if even need to, to, in order to say, to include them because it sounds like it would include them already.
I think it's a fantastic idea, but I will tell you that you're going, we might get pushback from other people who work in Penfield, but are not teachers. I might say then, well, why can't a teacher get it and not, because that, that teacher could pay the $25 for the paid reciprocal.
You're right.
But as opposed to a student who really, we shouldn't put that burden on a child.
Rhonda, just to clarify, are you thinking of perhaps individuals who are employees of the town but not residents of the town?
Right.
Okay.
There are a lot of those and we actually have many library staff members who don't live in Monroe County and so I'd be a little wary of opening it up too much.
One quick follow-up question. In the scenario where someone does live in Wayne County, is a part of the Penfield School District and then moves into Penfield proper, would you imagine them just serendipitously finding out when they show up at the library and they do an address change that they're privy to a different status or card or something to that effect?
Right. I mean, when, when you get a restricted library card, you're filling out a different form. It's very clear that it's not the regular library card because we have to tell them they can't go then to Fairport with this card. It looks different. It is different, but yes.
Thank you.
So do you want a language to include teachers or faculty member there, Rhonda?
I'm cautious about that. I see, I see the value. I definitely see the value, but I also kind of think a teacher can pay the $25. I don't know.
I understand your, your concern in that because you might get a lot of people then that say, that might be different, you know?
And does anyone else have any other thoughts?
I think we keep it to students and keep it simple right now. And then if you, if we see pushback, then we can always revisit the policy later and we can discuss, but at least we can get one step at a time. That's my opinion.
Kind of like what we do with the fees. We did it for the children first and then we're going to reevaluate later on in the fall. All right. So I think we're, do I have a motion to approve that language or just to teach?
I'll make that motion.
Justin, have a second. Hannah, all those in favor?
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. And then the last item I have, for whatever reason, Penfield Public Library will only issue a library card to patrons five and above. And if you go back probably to when some of us were first getting library card, that was the way a lot of libraries worked. The idea being that when you're five years old, you're old enough to understand what you're doing, you can possibly sign your name, they can make a big production out of it. But things have really changed and most of our neighboring libraries allow any child of any age to get a library card. There are children who are ready to read at age four. There are children who are ready to check out books at age three, to be quite honest. They come all excited. We do have an issue pretty often with nannies or grandparents who don't live in Monroe County, don't have a library card and they come with their grandchildren and they say, can we check out books? This is my grandchild. And no, no, you can't actually. And the other issue I have with this is for whatever reason, again, I don't know the answer, but we do have this limited storytime library card that we've had as long as the staff remember, whereas where if the child, one, two, three, four years old, is in a storytime program, that child gets a limited library card. And to me, that's an issue. A lot of parents are working. They don't have time. They're busy. They have many children and they can't get their kids to storytime. So why would one child have this special library card whereas another child, due to reasons beyond his or her control, not have any access to a card? So I think honestly that we should just put it down to zero like many of our other libraries. And I'm listing the libraries here. There's Fairport, Brighton, Mendon, Pittsford, Gates, Chillicothe, Ogden and Palmer, considerable number of libraries who allow any child of any age to get a library card. The parent still has to sign for it for that financial responsibility. Nothing is changing. We're just saying you don't have to wait until you're five.
I don't see an issue with this. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Quick question, Rhonda. Have you, interacting with any town libraries that don't have this policy that we're looking at doing, have you gotten a sense of why they haven't?
Because it's the way it's always been done.
Okay.
And they want to make it an exciting experience and they want to bring out all the balloons and say, this is wonderful. You have a library card. And they think the age of five is the time to do that. I think every child is different. And honestly, saying no to a child is a billion times worse than a day with balloons.
Especially one who wants to read a book.
Yeah. I don't know if this is the reason or not, or reason or not, but I know when my kids were in kindergarten, so they were five, in kindergarten at Penfield Schools, they did a field trip. Everybody went to the library and got their library card. So I don't know if that was part of because it was when you were five or, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? But I know that that was part of kindergarten.
Last year, and I don't know if it's pandemic related, only four classes came and right now we have four classes scheduled. There are four elementary schools in Penfield. So that's not all, they're not all coming for whatever reason. I don't know if there's a situation with bringing them out of the building or the buses. I don't know why they're not all coming. We have to start working on that and increasing that. But right now, they're not all having that, that opportunity.
I think that's also an interesting point because that then also to me, from the flip side brings up, because I remember taking my daughter to get her first library card and we did get the sticker and the whole, and that for me, as her mom, was like, oh, I took her to get her first library card. And so, I mean, I wouldn't start trouble with the school, but like I would be a little bit bothered if she came home from school and was like, we went on a field trip and I got my first library card. Because I'd be like, oh, well, I would have liked to be there for that. So I can see that, you know, on the, the flip side of it, it too. I mean, I think particularly, I think you make a great point that if you can get one, if you're registered for a storytime, it's clearly not a concern of like, oh, well, you know, until you're five, you're really not responsible enough. know, until you're five, you're really not responsible enough, or you're really not old enough because there already are exceptions being made. And, you know, like you said, people are busy. I mean, I, as a working mom, have always appreciated that Penfield does offer an evening storytime. But even that doesn't, you know, work for everybody's schedule. So it does also seem like you're setting up a situation where, you know, through circumstances outside of anyone's control, you know, the kid couldn't potentially get one.
And the parents are still financially responsible.
They're still financially responsible.
They're still signing off, so.
Yeah. Right. You're not handing a one-year-old a library card and saying, go crazy.
So the potential for abuse isn't there because there's still that financial ramification.
Right.
Not fines, but just in case it gets damaged or lost. Yeah. Okay.
Let's face it, we, I think a lot of us here have had five-year-olds. Five-year-olds are not that responsible. If five is the magic age.
Hey, Rhonda.
Yes.
Do grandparents, nannies, that type of thing qualify for the paid reciprocal borrowers card?
They do, of course they do, and we tell them. But typically, they're not going to be here that long, and they're only here for the week or whatever, and the nanny doesn't want to pay.
So it's more grandparents that are just coming to visit rather than grandparents that have.
Or even, I mean, honestly thinking, you know, if somebody's retired and on a fixed income, not that $25 is hugely significant, but enough so that if they're, you know, if they're bringing somebody, even if the somebody is younger, if they're bringing somebody who is a resident of Monroe County, it seems to me like they should, you know, be able to utilize.
I agree.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve changing the age from five to zero? Raj, you have a second? Megan? All those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Perfect.
Really, thank you. So the next item is the state report. I have a physical copy here, but I sent you all an e-copy.
Yep.
You know, it's like 23 pages of statistics, dates and names and numbers. I had asked that everybody just check their own information, and I didn't get back any changes. You know, the board has to approve it. That's part of the law. So I do need a vote. What typically happens is that then this will go to Division of Libraries, and they will come back and say, this isn't clear. Can you change this? Can you change that? And we'll change it because it's just, you know, whatever. They worded it in some way that just wasn't clear. But the numbers are the numbers. You know, we collect them all year, and this is just a way for the state to, you know, collect that data. But we will take this information, and we will create a community report, which I'll present at the next meeting. And that will show you how our numbers are doing. Are we increasing or decreasing in our circulation, in our programming, in our number of books purchased, and so on?
I move to approve then.
Justin, you have a second?
Thank you.
Jennifer, all those in favor?
Thank you. Once it's put into a community report, and we'll, you know, we have, we have Miriam doing that, and she does such an amazing job, it's, it'll be nice and bright and clear, and you'll all feel very happy and proud of what the library's doing. I'm sure of it.
Thank you for all the work you put into that.
Yeah.
Thank you for the work that you put into it.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. I actually love doing it. I'm one, you know, you speak to the other directors, they're like, oh my God, this is horrible. It is exhausting. I'm not saying no. But I like, I like, I like statistics. I like data. So it's interesting to me.
All right. So we go on to the next item here, the renewal of the computer leases.
Right. So Tri Delta Resources is the company we use for our computer leases, and you all have copies of it. And what happened this year, and I think it's happening everywhere, the prices have really skyrocketed. So of course, we didn't budget for these huge increases. The increase was from the original lease, which was three years ago, has gone up 25%. We did have a similar lease in April 2022, and it's gone up 6% in just, you know, less than a year. So we looked at the number of computers, and we narrowed down the ones we really need to replace because sometimes computers, if then, sometimes computers can be used for longer than three years. You know, some, some computers don't have to be the newest. So instead of reordering a full 20 desktops, we were cutting it back to 13, and we're purchasing seven old, three-year-old desktops that are still working fine. And these are the desktops that are not used as often. They're not staff desktops in front of one person. They're shared. So it's just, you know, convenience. You know, we have a few behind the circulation desk. We have a few in the staff room where people can just check in and check out. They're just not used as much, and there's not as much software on them. So this was our way of saving money. And by doing that, you know, we did cut the number, the payments to $162 less per quarter than we were paying for the last three years. Very good.
Very nice. Do we have a motion to approve? Raj, you have a second? Jennifer, all those in favor?
Thank you so much.
And then the last item under new business is for the local grant.
Right. So we did get this local grant in 2022, and some of you weren't here, and some of you might not even remember, but this is a local grant. This is a, an amount of money that was left by a private citizen to all, almost all, not all, almost all the libraries in Monroe County. And it's being distributed through the Friends and Foundation of the Rochester Public Library. And part of the grant stipulates that the donor be anonymous. So whenever we refer to this grant, we call it the FFRPL grant, because we don't want to name the person who is actually giving us the money, who has passed, but gave us the money. The grant is very specific. It can be used to purchase books of any format for any ages, as long as they're in the English language. So last year, we received about $8,000 for this grant, and this year, it's almost doubled to 15 and change. But we do need to vote to say that yes, we will accept this grant in the, for $15,628, and we will use it as stipulated by the grant instructions.
With the rules that they've set in place?
What's that?
Along with the rules that they've set in place, too.
With all of the rules. And we did it already in 2022, no issues, and it was fantastic. And now we have even more money. The biggest, the biggest stipulation is that we don't lower our book budget. They don't want us basing our book budget on the fact that we're going to get extra money. They want to increase our book budget. So.
That's great.
We will do that.
I love it. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Harris, second. Raj, all those in favor?
Great. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. And then onto the last item here, claims and payment. I don't know who was on.
So that was me this month. I appreciate all the help in coming in to review the vouchers. I believe all I'm saying here is that I agree with the tally to be 21,000.
A motion to approve.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the payment of the vouchers and that amount.
I would like to make a motion to approve the amount of $21,114.93.
I'll second.
Jennifer, seconds. All those in favor? And then who would be doing the claims payment in April? Sorry. Anna, thank you. Okay. And with that, was there anything else that anyone else wanted to bring up? No? I think that we'll, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Raj, you have a second? Anna, perfect. All those in favor? And now adjourn this meeting.